Discussion and action on joining region three for. The Iowa workforce development, we want.
And that I need to be able to sign the paper.
Yeah, and Sandy is. Yes, but it didn't get. Published on. So, um, and then we did get the paperwork from Elder Bridge, so we'll also take action on that. So with that, I would.
Make a motion to. Prove the agenda as printed today.
All right. In a second, any other discussion? All in favor, I. Oh, same sign, motion carry. Then we have the minutes.
Correction on the minutes towards the bottom during the canvassing. The votes after the canvassing was moved by Rick, but it was seconded by me and not Bruce. And we reassess or. Coast is follows and then there's a list of the votes as follows. So other than that. Minutes correct, make a correction, make a motion.
Sorry. All in favor, I. Post same sign, motion carry. Everybody silent. Okay.
I guess as you're all aware, the destination Iowa thing. Didn't go quite like we had hoped that it would. City decided that they weren't interested in doing the joint application thing. So last week we had a conservation board meeting. Talking a little bit about where we go from here. How we want to proceed and. This at the end of the, at the end of the day. The conservation board. Nation to put both the Rutland and reason their dams up for sale. In consulting with John Beatty. The conservation board can make a recommendation. But the board supervisors ultimately have the authority to pursue or not to pursue that option. So. Here I am, uh, letting you know the feelings of the conservation board. Yes, you guys can just talk through it or do what you guys wanna do.
Well. Your research thus far on offering it for sale. Can you? Can you offer a, I don't even know if it's a public entity or what you call these dams, but how.
It's not like a dump truck that we're trying.
Yeah, it's putting it up for bids or whatever. Can, can you because? That's a question.
John said, yes, you can.
You can.
I did reach out to the state ombudsman. And they referred me right back to the county attorney. So I didn't get too far with that. Um, again, if you wanted me to. Reach out. Someone outside. I mean, I will, but that's the answer I got from John.
Some of the other people you've talked to through all this, Todd, you and the conservation board, the DNR corp engineer, somebody would have the definitive. Answer that you can take a. Real simplistic way of saying that public. Structure and offer for sale to the private.
I don't see why that'd be any different than when we sold, wasn't it? You had a building in Rutland that that was sold? I don't think it'd be any different than that.
Process and that's what John said. It's similar. It's public property.
That's the case. I just, that's only. You know, point that I would want hundred percent clarification that it's legal.
Right.
Would it still be under DNR corp engineer ruling?
Whoever bought it would still be subject to. Whatever they wanted to do with it, they would have to follow the rules established by the Army Corps of Engineers and the Iowa DNR. Yes. They would be buying, I guess maybe I should clarify just the structure. The riverbed is sovereign or state owned. They would not be buying that property. I guess I think that's, that goes without saying, just to be clear.
Well, and I know after visiting with. Brett had made a comment that they're checking into. We have an ability for. Any other person to apply for state funds as. Grants or however they could do that. So I mean, this isn't. Our speed, I don't think we're gonna, um, we're still gonna be moving it. I don't know if it'd be classified as a snail's face or a turtle. Race, but at least we can take it under advisement, visit with John, maybe he can give us or. Read out as to what the steps are that we have to go through and.
Get to me, that makes sense to Bruce. I mean, I, I can reach out to someone else, but maybe John would have a contact. That would know definitively. How to proceed.
We're, uh. We were wondering if it was possible. The sale of it, the scary part of that is. Is there gonna be anybody wants to buy? I mean, we know Rutland. They wanna keep their name something turtle. We want to keep the dam here too. We want. Private ownership, again, would, would we have the ability to? To reach for the grants and loans that are available to, to work on. You know, it's private people, we, we can't do it just as a few. But through the county, so we, we kinda wondered, we were talking, just wanted, you know, could we just form a board specifically? You know, the supervisors take over ownership of the dam. And then we just set up a board of. Whoever. To oversee that. And just, you know, and then it still stays a public.
In all fairness. That's been the way this has been since that dam was built. And I'll tell you, then the board of supervisors here for, since the county is formed. Pretty sure there's been a conservation board here for darn near that long and they did oversee it. Richard Humble Dam and they did yeoman's work, the conservation board. And came up with, you know, as far as the county slash conservation board. Option that we've circled as we have this conversation a few weeks ago. Back and forth, around and around, up and down sideways. And here we are, it didn't go anywhere as Todd just stated, so this is, you can read in the boards, conservation boards minutes. Their decision to move forward with the sale. There we are.
And the other thing too, is you had a lot of people there at the council meeting and that surely if you had that many people there. And you guys were that concerned about it, maybe between all of you, you'd be able to come up with the money to do it and be able to fix it and you do whatever it is you wanna do with it.
And then that's very possible.
You know.
Try everything. Do, um, you know, obviously, you know, we don't know that.
Right.
Who would come up, you know, they've had several groups through the years. Restoration group.
But if you guys bought it, you then you'd have, other than getting permission to be able to do stuff, you'd have that whole group of people to be able to work on it and do it with what you wanted. You squashed the option two thing by, by all banning together. So now maybe it's time for you all to band together. And do what you wanna do with it. It's your own money or get grants or whatever you can do with it.
And if that's what it takes, I think, you know, that's what we are good to do. The, uh, we still, we just think the options for, for money, you know, available funds to work on it. To bring it back up to speed are gonna be, you know, better through you guys than from privately.
I did some research too, Barry, um, and this is from the DNR website. Cost share funds are available to all owners of dams on navigable streams. Doesn't necessarily specify it has to be a public entity.
Sure.
Okay, so.
And that, that's a plus. You know, it's just. Not to me, the auction part of it is a scary deal. You know, you would think this wouldn't happen, but if somebody somewhere decided we've never owned a dam before, we don't have one, they come in one paying approval. And that's why I guess, you know. If we can control it from this end, you know, then we, I think you know that, you know, the bunch of us that are, are working for keeping it. Would do everything in our power to make it a good deal. Are you gonna have that with somebody else?
Well, that was, that's what happens when certain other things get squashed. So I mean, you've just gotta take your chances.
But, um, well, when you've been doing that along, I think you take a chance.
For too long. We, we just kicked it down the can for how long and it's, it comes to a time where we gotta quit kicking and we gotta do something.
How do you guarantee that a private person would do the repairs necessary?
Well, they, they, that, that, that private person then would be liable. I would, that would be my. Right, so.
But it hasn't. So, so here we are.
Totally disagree or totally agree with you, Gary. We have reports now that specifically state this, this and this must be addressed. The code actually states that if these are not addressed, the state can step in and remove it in there.
Right. So then you'd really. I mean, if they come in and do that, well. Too bad. I mean, I'm sorry. I hate to see that completely go, but if that's what happens.
Well, by the same token, and Sandy, I don't, I'm, we're not gonna get into an argument.
I'm just stating some things.
Was dead set against doing what? The city and the county had agreed or tried to, to, to do.
Right.
So that's America.
I know, and that's why I'm stating my opinion to just my opinion to state.
And these, these people are, but it has to be, we have to make sure that whatever we do. A direction, uh, working together, figure it out, cause to be honest, I live out there and I'm really damn tired of the whole damn. It's just like, we just keep a dog that keeps chasing his tail and we. We're, so if that's, I guess we'll take their. Recommendation that they're wanting to put it up. Talk with John, see where we. What and how we move forward and go from there.
Get our information, everything down pat.
And I guess you guys is between Rutland and, and your group that is interested. However, whatever works the best, we can try to find the middle of the road and.
You know, we, we continue to, you know, we're trying to talk to engineers and people.
Right.
About what to do, how to do it. You know, we've said before, if it's, if it's a train wreck. We understand. But we can't, but if it can be repaired. That's an option that just has not been brought up. It's just a repair of it. It's always been, you know, drastic measures, I think.
Gary, with all due respect, it has been addressed, the repair side of it.
Well, and I'm sure it has, yeah.
The repair side of it has been addressed, Stan Tech very specifically laid out. Yes, we can put gates on it. Yes, we can. We can, uh, do this and this and this, but in order to do so, we must drill back so far, reinforce it. Reinforce the downside of it. That was alternative one. Which was twenty nine dollars.
And that was with the dredging and.
That was every, every. Twenty million, but that, all those concerns become addressed because they said, we, yes, you can put gates on this, right? You can certainly do that. In order to do that, you need to reinforce this hundred and ten year old structure. But I mean, that's, that's the facts. I mean, you had Stan Tech very clear about that. They gave us that, cause that was the first thing. We wanted specific. Alternatives addressing everyone's desires.
But it included, it was so far reaching, it was, it was just, that got huge. We think, you know, that it can be fixed, just what sir, you know, fix the gates, you know, put the boards on. You know, move forward, the city side of the damn office, you know, not, not the twenty million dollar option. You know, it's been said, the only just silk won't move. We did, we've got some stuff, we had a guy go out there and did, uh, depth reading. There, there are huge areas out there reported by a P P without boards. That's gonna make it seven feet deep with boards. You know, there's things like that. We don't really, we don't need all that silk move. And that was about ten million dollars and that twenty million. You know, so instead of. Let's just, let's fix it and see what we can do with it. The silver is moving around. Stand themselves, if you read a report on the first page, it says it, it says that is the way you, you start. Is let it naturally sit away. It will.
So with that being said, we have gates on Rutland, right? They were not opened in twenty one when last winter, the study was done by Chris and Todd of the measurements. I physically went with them on Friday. And the gates were open, what? Ten times this year?
Yes.
And the depth reading is shallower than last year. In twenty one.
We had no rain. So they would be shallower.
Correct. But, yeah, to move, to move that still, you know, it's not, it's not a small deal. It takes three things. And we haven't had.
Well, I would like to put it back to Bruce had a good comment that. Yeah, you brought this in front of the words. My only other question is, yeah, obviously, apparently it seems like it's legal. And from your researcher questions, Todd, uh, you said. You found out that needs the board of supervisors has to make the decision to offer for sale. Is that kind of what, what we're talking about?
Basically, I'm here to inform you today of the conservation board's opinion. According to John Beatty, you would have to do a, like a public hearing and then approve a resolution to sell. Then you would determine. Time, date and method of sale. And i- if you chose to pursue that option. You guys have basically total control from here.
There's probably so many days in that after the public hearing and all that, would be my guess.
Yeah, I believe so, Sandy, but John didn't get into this.
Correct me if I'm wrong, please, and you normally do, but everybody, but so it sounds like from what Todd's checked into thus far. And we've already kicked this around that we need to have a conversation with county attorney as to the protocol.
Correct.
That's kind of the whole gist of it. And Bruce said, that's kind of where we're at and, uh, versus having any more discussion about.
Yeah.
We, they and so, then it seems like that's where we're at right now.
Right. So we just gotta get our things buttoned down.
Get the questions on the legal side.
Right, the actual procedure.
Exactly.
The timelines and everything.
Todd and I talked the other day about, you know, if you do it on the auction or if you do it as a closed, like when we sell a vehicle. You know, you do it on an auction and somebody comes in and says, well, we'll give you a dollar. I don't think the auctioneer is gonna work for twenty five percent of that dollar. So, I mean, those were just things that we had visited about on. Or, uh, if you do it as a close bid, at least you know that you got one bidder, you got no bids. And then we move from that point, so.
If it's another public entity, could you just transfer it? Like if you were given the dam to the city of Rutland, could you just transfer it the same way? We transferred the Rutland shop to conservation without opening up for.
Well, there's another question. That's what we had to find out.
I think you can do that. I know Bruce, when I did talk to John, he recommended the auction. As opposed to the sealed bids, just because of the transparency of the auction. I mean, it just seems like there's a lot of mistrust, I guess, maybe between folks. And I just wouldn't want if you bid two dollars and like bits and bit three. I don't want you coming back and saying, well. I did talk to Tom and Dave on Mark and they would be interested in doing something. Realizing they're not gonna get rich probably on, on the auction. So I think the county could do that at a very reasonable cost.
Yeah, they're really. They're very graceful with this.
Good.
My smart Alex has to take over because I've been to some of Dave's auctions where he has a hard time keeping everybody's attention. I'm guessing David would be just a little bit edgy when people wouldn't shut up so he could get this thing started. That, I just know Dave, so.
Sounds like as far as board of supervisors is concerned, the next thing is to. Line up the conversation with the county attorney. And yet, like Sandy said, the protocol and some of these questions.
How about if we just call him and have him do an outline as to what we have to do in order to accept this, we take, they've given.
That's.
Basically to our, us.
That we have the.
Get a direction for what we need to do in order to, to move forward.
That's fine.
I'll try to reach out to him after.
That'd be, yep, cause like Sandy said, it's a procedural.
Yeah, we just gotta follow the procedure.
And with Rick gone, we sure don't want him to miss any of this.
The rest of us, so I think that's a good idea. Bruce, did you contact him this week and maybe we can get it? If it isn't, you know, this isn't an outright emergency, nothing's on fire, but, uh, there again sooner than later. That would be great. Thank you and thanks to the conservation board, people chilled up and Gary.
I think my cell plan should, my minutes should drop. Well, I've had some nice conversations with Tate, Nate and Todd and I mean. It's. It's a talkable subject, so.
Well.
We appreciate it very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, Ben, what kind of trouble do you got here? Yours is very little, just working right away again.
Yes, uh, so talking with Jim Nostrum last week. They are gonna be some patent filing in their field and. There's an intake that they want to hook into that also needs to move their air that they're. Opposing doing the repair work at the same time that they're.
Okay.
Right away. Map.
I like your map.
I couldn't remember if I attached. He, I, I made sure that he wasn't planning on crossing district lines with his pattern filing.
Looks like it's right on.
And, uh, together we drew the map out and he said that he was not, he was just looking at installing the double of laterals. He said there's a defined hill there that he wouldn't be going up.
Obviously, that's why there's boundaries.
Yep. So.
Uh, Ben, I got a question.
Other than getting a, an updated copy of Corey Benz's insurance, which he's supposed to be hitting us this week.
Well, my question is what you, your little drawing, so that's pretty much the tile they're gonna install. But you said there's an existing intake in the ditch.
So.
So is there existing tile?
There's an existing tile that crosses the road right now. He's looking at hooking into the intake and the north ditch.
And fixing it.
And fixing it.
So that tile line, if you will, that goes south of the road. Is there?
Yeah.
So really the only, other than fix the intake, is those, we'll say there's three laterals.
Yep.
To the north in that district, that's what they're installing. So then, so the. The south part is there.
The line crossing the road, that's.
That's there, okay, okay, so that's, yeah. Anything else?
What, they didn't ensure? What is the actual? There's no address on there, is there? Did I, or am I missing?
Uh, it's, it's Jim Nostrum's home address is where we're sending the approved application to.
Okay.
But I believe this is. On the highway, uh, Chandler Blacktop, it'd be over by. Just east of Georgia.
That's what I wondered if it was, that's what I thought, it was at Georgia.
From the looks of the.
Yes, yeah. It's just off the corner of Georgia.
Yep.
I know that home site.
Oh. The only thing you're pending was an updated copy. And he knows that?
Yep. Yeah. I think he's got it through David's Martin Current, so there's.
Other than that, in order, I make a motion that we approve that application for Jim Nostrum and Corey Benz.
We have a motion in a second to approve the work in the right of way for James Nostrum. Waiting on his approval for his, uh, insurance update. Any other discussions? All in favor, I. Post same sign, motion carry.
The DOT bid letting that we had last week.
Sorry, my arms aren't as long.
The top project is the Lone Tree Bridge. Low bidder was Dixon Construction for seven hundred and sixty four thousand nine hundred and thirty six dollars. And. The second project is the bridge replacement with a box culvert. And Peterson Contractors Inc. was the low bid at two hundred and five thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars.
Is that Peterson Reinbeck Peterson?
Yes. Uh, we haven't gotten contracts from the DOT yet. I was just updating you on what the prices were for that.
There's a big difference between. The high bid and the low bid.
Yeah. Sometimes they will just throw a flyer in. If, if they're already, if their plate's already relatively full, the. Throw in a bid that more or less says, we don't need to work, but if we get it, we're gonna make a bunch of money.
Gotcha. That makes sense.
So this Dixon, who are they, where are they out of, do you know?
Just gonna look them up, correction bill.
Well, you familiar with these contractors, Ben?
I, I know the name. I've never worked with Dixon myself. We don't do a lot of being bridges like this particular one.
And this one is located.
Down on Lone Tree Road down at the south end.
Okay, that was one that you did all of the native American artifact studies and.
Exactly.
Toads, minnows and cewamanders.
All of those.
Yeah, okay, so that's, this is on the county level, moving forward with submission back to the DOT.
So the DOT will end up sending us contract documents for us to approve. In the coming weeks. Uh, originally, the bridge was. Budgeted for seven hundred thousand. My last estimate came in at about seven hundred and thirty thousand. Which was back in August.
Okay.
And the bid was seven sixty four, seven sixty five. For the box culvert, I had it. Programmed and. Estimated around two hundred and sixty thousand, so that actually came in under. By us being able to do a single cell box over versus the double that I didn't budgeted for.
For location purposes, the box culvert is.
Buffalo Olsen's.
That one.
So it'd be a mile north of boat, mile west of boat, and then a quarter of a mile north on Hawaii.
Well, that's good. Really too out of line, if not under.
Yeah, I mean, as far as if you had the projects together, we're right.
Guess, man.
Excellent.
Are you, are these winter, spring?
Uh, the bridge project has a little bit of tree removal and with the Indiana long. That there might be some tree removal this winter. Uh, they're allowed for free winter work through something the DOT spells out. So they could possibly come in this winter and start removal. Uh, I can't officially talk to them until we have signed contracts to find out for sure.
Culvert would be.
Yeah, the tour is probably gonna be like next September. And that's kind of BCI rolls in, I mean, they'll.
Okay.
They'll get that one knocked out and.
That's not a big comparatively to box, it's a box culvert.
Yeah, the, the bridge you're looking at, I think there's seventy five or eighty working days, so.
That's.
Sixteen to twenty weeks. It'll be closed most of summer.
The bridge, the bridge, not the box. Well, good deal. Thank you for the update.
Yeah.
You know.
Uh, beyond that, my two employees, their last day is today. We had a retirement party for them on Friday. We had a retirement for him on Friday.
You know what, I think I drove by there and wondered why all the vehicles was that. Forgot all about it, I apologize.
Oh, that's fine, I mean, it was a pretty good turnout, we had a lot of the, uh, former retired guys come in.
I think that's what he did, I just was talking when I went by wondering what was going on with all the vehicles around there.
I know one of them expressed. One of them expressed the possibility of coming back this summer and working part-time, definitely a mower for us. I said, oh, kicker on the idea, depends on what we've got going. If we're gonna do a lot of ditch reclamation with maintainers, it makes sense to be able to throw a guy in a mower. More moving or adding additional responsibilities to the guys.
You have to train them, it's kind of a win-win situation, if it does come to that.
Yup. The only other question that I have. Have we applied for ICAP funds yet this year? They give us a thousand dollar safety grant.
Well, we should.
What I was looking at doing was ordering headsets for all my guys. The way, the way the law works is if, if you're using your CDL, you're supposed to be hands-free. But then they came out with a rule that said that state and local governments are exempt from. As nine, but that's what that did when they passed the rule. Anybody driving over the road truck right now, if they're talking on the phone, is supposed to be hands-free.
Yup.
I don't know why, or it's not a possibility that I would have been funding was to purchase hands-free. Gear devices for all of my guys.
Definitely be safer.
You'd be looking at eighteen units of.
You can get them cheaper there, get them over here. Uh, nap up there. A hundred bucks, less than a hundred bucks, I bet around a hundred bucks.
I need to ask, ICAP, that's even a possibility of using that funding for.
Well, I can't, I agree with you, I don't, for me to drive down and meet a snowplow and he's got.
Yeah.
His phone to his head, driving one-handed, and he's got three plows going, or winging out and. His bottom and his front, and he can drive and I can't drive my semi without having my headset on, cuz it's ten thousand dollar fun.
So Bob Wolf, my employee in Renwick, he said that, uh, one of the drivers from that area for N S got fined.
Really?
And it also goes back to the company.
It's ten thousand, do you ten thousand?
So if N S or M S or whoever the, whoever's name's on that door, you're gonna get a.
Dying to.
Dying to.
Now, I mean, our newer trucks, they've got Bluetooth.
Bluetooth capability.
Where you can do it without the headset, but as far as quality of hearing and.
So you need, your question was, you don't ask anybody if I'd for that thousand dollars?
Right.
And if we can use it.
Trish, Trish would have to look.
Okay, and then if it can be used for headsets.
And then I need to check with ICAP.
That's not a good idea.
I think it would be.
That's a really good idea.
Yeah. I just wanted to run it by you guys before I pursued anything.
Yeah.
Uh, beyond that, we're taking applications through Wednesday at four thirty, I think we have. Seven applications turned in.
Is that for?
For two positions.
Two position.
Relatively well.
I was gonna say for two, I thought.
Nobody wants to work anymore, and if you've got a CDL, you can go somewhere else and make more money than we can at the county.
Still have to work though.
You don't have the retirement package that the county has.
Right.
Or the, or the health benefits, you can make them, and younger kids that have CDLs. They see the dollar signs, they don't see the.
The long-term benefits.
Well, the other side of the coin is, is they look at, you know, the time that they work. And then all of a sudden, when you say, and you're on call all winter long. I mean, all winter long.
It's all winter long.
That's the part that is frustrating, but like you say, there are. I've had several people ask, and I said, well, I'm almost positive that CDL is required. Didn't we change that?
So CDL is currently still required, uh, I had a meeting last week with Midas and a bunch of different entities. And between Midas and the Iowa DOT, they've. Dropped this, theirs, they've dropped their CDL requirement with the understanding that if the right applicant comes in. They're gonna put them through the week-long training course at Iowa Central. And then they have a form that says that they'll work for the company for six months. Or reimburse the company for the cost. Of course, um, they're supposed to be, the Midas is supposed to be getting me the paperwork that they have them sign. As far as the agreement and the process that they use. Should be hearing from Stacy this week.
Okay.
But as of, as of right now, yeah, these two positions, the CDL required.
Oh, we get, if not a few more applicants, at least good applicants, you only need two good applicants.
Need two.
Need two good applicants, that's all you need.
Yes.
Well, I also heard on the radio, I think Pocahontas, if I remember, Pokie was as one in the. Their advertising board, and I don't remember.
Pokie's had trouble hiring, as of late, I know they tried to hire an assistant engineer, and they got. They tried hiring some road crew guys and had that little ton of applicants, for whatever reason.
Well, let's keep our fingers crossed, I've talked to a couple of people that were inquiring about it, and I said, well, I'm. It's hard to hire someone if you, and put them in one of our snowplows or something that. Don't have a CDL means you haven't driven a whole lot, so I'm guessing that, that would, if it was. We were going into the summer, it'd be a lot easier than staying here, where we'll give you a couple lessons and then. Take you out and you can take our truck.
Yeah.
That's for us, we have to watch our liability also, so.
And then, uh, it's the last thing I wanted to check on, and I talked with Eric here. Probably a week or two ago, and you talked to somebody down by Little Drag Strip. Uh, about removing the remaining seal coat north of where we repaired and overlaid. There's probably four hundred feet of remaining seal coat that's pothole and chuckle. And we fill in the holes with three, it's minus, pack it in as best we can, it lasts for a while. I, I don't know who you talked to, but.
Someone that looks out, a couple people that live off, and live either there or drive there, bold, and it's rougher than.
Wanting us to just rip up the remainder of the seal coat and turn it back to gravel before we receive it, I wanted.
You stated too, that's past the, the, the seal coat area.
Right.
And you're not gonna seal coat it, and they were just asking, you described it.
We did a two, two-inch asphalt overlay, not this summer, but summer before. And we went up past, uh. Lawn Rangers driveway entrance and, and stopped there, because beyond that, it was gone. Beyond that, you've got four residents, Johnson's Bear Hunters, Mayles, and, um. Can't think of the one off the top of my head, that's next to Mayles.
Tinkin.
Tinkin, yes, uh, you've got four residents to the north there. So the, the seal coat does work as somewhat of a dust control for those four residents. But it is slowly breaking away, and the understanding is, once gone, it's gone. Like I said, I just wanted to run it past.
You said you could, thought you could get four of them.
Cuz I, I mean, we, it's probably gonna be next spring now, but I've got that rear shank ripper that goes on. That I could. Drop the rear shank and tear up what's left of that seal coat loaded up and haul it away.
So would we just pile that somewhere, or I know that there's some out of quarry. That's what I figured.
Be kind of a, I don't even know, wouldn't be much left about what they're done.
I don't think so, no, I mean, I, I think as you started loading it up, it would crumble and fall apart.
Something for fill, possibly, or something.
We haul it to the old landfill, or I know grown back from them, take.
Because asphalt out there that they run through the grinder when they. I, I guess if the last case, we don't have a, we aren't gonna do anything with the road or reseal it and.
Now they.
You're gonna have to be able to repair.
Just a matter of just having as most of our gravel roads, which are limestone, limestone road are good. They just want a good limestone coat, instead of, what's left of the seal coat is just a nightmare. It's rough and it's tough.
That's maintenance.
Yeah, and it just, it will also make the maintenance better, and the road will maintain better with it being just a regular limestone road. Get rid of that old seal coat crap, cuz they said it's getting really, really rough, yet here or there, and. They'd like to see it, they'd like to. No, no, actually, they understood that it wasn't going any further blacktop, but just make it into a nice, regular gravel. Instead of this intermediate thing, that's just beating the heck out of stuff, and it's very hard to maintain versus just a regular.
Right.
Secondary road, so.
While I was talking to Eric, we were talking about dump trucks at the same time. There, obviously, there is a shortage of dump trucks, I talked to multiple suppliers. Uh, they had about a seven to ten day window in September where they filled allocations. For people who previously expressed interest to purchase. Uh, there's no opening for trucks right now, I've talked to Reese and Ford Dodge. And, uh, Don's Truck Sales, where we purchased in the past. Both of them have the understanding that whenever there's a green light for purchasing the next truck, whoever's first is probably gonna end up getting the trucks. Freight liners with all snow equipment on it, it's roughly two hundred thousand dollars a truck. Max was no equipment on it, it's roughly three hundred. Just forewarning that, that might be something that crops up early next year. Where it'll be an allocation that we end up getting the truck in twenty twenty-four. Trucks are roughly a year to fourteen months up.
Nothing we can do about that.
Well, but, I mean.
We've got two old two thousand sevens that I'm trying to get replaced, otherwise our fleet's pretty solid. So, I mean, that's what I'm working with right now, I've got two old trucks that we use basically in the wintertime. Uh, and some when we're hauling rock, but otherwise.
So you're just more or less at the point of pulling the pin, have to go ahead, and it's still.
Can.
Yeah.
I've already, I've already told them, whenever it's available, I'm ordering.
But it's still gonna push it, probably past next fiscal year, you don't even need to look for one to show up in twenty-three, probably.
We're in fiscal year twenty-three right now.
Right, I mean, I'm talking physical. Yeah, what you just, regardless.
No.
So it's just matter.
Even if I ordered them today.
Be twenty-four.
It'd be twenty-four, so.
But, yeah, I think our discussion was, you just, and you said, have to get it ordered, to get it.
There's that much of a shortage, I can't, I can't order one right now.
Yeah.
Well, we also said we were cautiously optimistic, all of this stuff might get at least a little better, so that you can order, and it does show up by a year after that.
The suppliers are hoping that they'll drop the allocation requirements that they have lately adjusting.
Are you?
That's right, we were gonna check that, and we forgot.
Sandy, we gotta get the lights and something area.
You're done with the scanner out there, right?
It's here.
Oh, we gotta move?
We gotta move, yeah.
Okay, good deal.
We've gotta move, I'm not sure, I think it's downstairs in Chris's office.
Yes.
Yeah, it's down in Chris's office right now.
All right, way ahead of me.
We moved, yeah, we moved it a couple weeks ago, three weeks ago.
Is it gonna get moved over to Diane's area, that up in there?
Possibly, uh, when I talked to Chris, Diane and them wanted in that back room, which is their break room. Which they also told Trish and Chris that they would never need a. Landline for internet in that back room, so there's been no cable run to that back room.
Oh.
To be able to. Power, so.
To use it to save their stuff. Be able to, cuz wouldn't it become more convenient for them to have it in that room? To get things done.
Yeah, it would be, but we're gonna have to get that phone and.
But I mean, is there a way to get cable there, I mean. They can also save it to a flash drive, right?
Well, she thought they could run an extension, you know, get one of them fifty-foot lines and run it from one of the other jacks and this.
Me, you can take a hard drive.
I.
Oh. Large portable hard drive and plug it in.
Oh, that would work, yeah, that would work.
No. Save it to a network.
Well, it's here, that's.
That's a good part, yeah. This is looking at some different options, maybe even a. A thing that goes on it that, that's the internet, not at the internet, but our.
Like a wireless, like a Wi-Fi router. Yup, that would also be a possibility.
There's options, it's just whether, what's the best route?
Well, at least it's here.
Yep.
The other thing on our, from our safety meeting the other day, did you reach out to the hospital, or did you talk to anybody about your?
CPR.
Can you, in the next week or so, put that on your to-do list and see if we can't line maybe something up for. Yeah, well, try to get something either through December or possibly January, whatever they're. Looking at, as far as availability, and I guess we'll put some dates together and get them to the people here.
Okay.
So, that would be awesome. All right, thank you. Anything else? All right. Well, hopefully have, tell everybody to have a good Thanksgiving. Hopefully it warms up and.
I think there's a chance of rain on Bursa.
Is there?
We could use the rain, since they're still outputting anhydrous and ripping the ground. So actually kind of insulated it, and they're still rolling dirt over, so. Not throws yet. All right, thank you. All right, we wanna go to the Iowa Workforce. Reaching three and four, and you wanna do the.
Okay, so what the deal is with these new rules that the Department of Labor have put in. That the regions have to have their executive director. Um, and we need a full-time executive director, and so does Northwest area, which is region three and four. Um. You can't, for what our budget is, we, we can't afford to buy, buy, that is sound terrible, we can't afford to pay. Somebody, because our budget, we'd only be allowed thirty thousand, well, nobody's gonna work for thirty thousand. So we combined our budgets in our area, we've been guaranteed that we will not lose the Ford Dodge, Iowa Workforce, or the Spencer one. Um, Beth Townsend really wants us to merge, um, it would be better to, to combine the two together, cuz we're not gonna get any more money. So we could afford to actually pay for a good executive director, and she would take care of the whole. There's ten counties over there, and I forgot my map, I was gonna grab it, and I forgot, and then. There's ten counties over there and I forgot my map, I was gonna grab it and I forgot and then there's six with ours, so there'd be like sixteen counties. That would all be together and um, yeah, these these new rules were. Evidently, they were put into twenty fourteen, but no one in Iowa. Enforced it and yeah, oh, I I know, imagine that. And then um, the Department of Labor said, oh, you're gonna lose all your Iowa work or your workforce funding. If you don't do these, so that's why we've been scrambling the last, well, then COVID came, so then they extended everything. So now we finally got our local plans together. Our local plan is very, I mean, there isn't hardly any difference between. Northwest, we have the same service providers, we have the same one stop operator, we have the same fiscal agent, so it's very seamless for us to come together. Other than we're gonna be actually be able to afford a full time executive director, which we need. Because they can look for funding, you know, grants and things like that that will actually and then coordinate between the two.
So that, is this as as stated, it's just joining the two regions?
Correct, and for you to approve for me to sign the papers for the Iowa workforce merger.
So technically, it's gonna benefit us by having the two groups come together and they can. One person.
I mean, executive.
Well, we have Heather Garcia, who is. But she was doing it, and this is the other thing that's crazy, she was doing it for five other areas. But the state doesn't like it that she's doing five areas because she doesn't feel, they don't feel that she can do. Do it. Efficiently or I don't know if efficient correctly, I don't know. Honestly, she. But a lot of the same stuff is is the same for each region, you know, the the papers, you know, getting local. We have nineteen workforce boards for each area. That's the other thing for to combine, because it's hard to find. Cause you, to be on the local workforce board, you have to either be an HR, a business owner or like an operations manager. So it's hard to get nineteen people out of six counties that are willing and then thank God Alyssa Connors agreed to be the um. Development, you know, person for, you had to have one um, development person, so you know, it's just. It's tough to get all these people, so if we can get some from them, some from us and to keep them active, I mean, we have it. But it's to get them there, to get them to be active and we need to be working on and there's money out there. I know I say this every time I talk about Iowa workforce, but there is so much money out there to be able to train this dislocated workers, youth. Oh my, and you're considered a youth until you're twenty four, so you know that.
Yeah, I hate to tell you that we're not, we're not youth anymore or.
I know, we're way beyond being you.
Maybe there's some money there to to retrain older folks.
Well, if you were dislocated, you 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 could be like. And that's the other thing, okay, so if you were laid off and you know, they always talk about the um, underemployed or how, but anyway, the people that are off. Of unemployment, there's money for you to get retrained. If you've been off unemployment, you're off of it that you can't get back on it. Um, there's money there for you to get retrained into any field you wanna get into.
And this.
And it's basically free money.
So the executive.
But we're having a hard time finding people that wanna get retrained.
Well, I have a hard time. To begin with, but.
Yeah, but you know, so there's, I mean, there's no stumbling blocks, there's, it's. Yeah, it's there.
So the executive director would be for the two regions.
The two regions, right, right.
And then that would, all the other stuff, the funding and help that.
And the coordinating.
Coordinating to get.
Yeah, all that and that way we can do a better job of, I don't know, average, we've done a lot of advertising, though, I mean, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know what else we can do. But we need some brains to help.
Three and four would make a sixteen county.
So we're area five, they're area three, four, so I don't know what they'll call us when we combine. But yeah, it'll be sixteen. Right.
So it all sounds really good and hopefully it will be a little less frustrating when it happens. I would make the motion. Uh, for the joinings of region three and four for the Iowa workforce development.
And authorization.
And often, oh, yeah, authorization and Sandy has something to be signed on that.
Motion and a second for the signing of the joining three and four together for the Iowa workforce development. Any other discussion? All in favor, I? Same sign, signing away.
Thanks, Andy, and I hope it goes better.
Week or so ago, we had the Elder Bridge Agency along aging report was gonna be. But they didn't get the information to us, so we tabled it. Trish now has the annual report and. Nothing. Out of the ordinary, I guess. From what it's been. Okay, so I guess we need to accept and place on file the Elder Bridge Agency on aging report for Bristol twenty one, twenty two.
I'll make a motion to accept place on file Elder Bridge Agent, Agency on Aging Annual Report.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to accept and place on file. Any other discussion? All in favor, I? Oh, same sign, motion carries. Just sign this, or you want to vote? All right, looks like we have reached the committee report.
Okay, Tuesday the fifteenth, I had kitty cat daycare board meeting. They are working on, Grum, Grumbach is working on. Splitting the um, or dividing, picking the wall out so that we can combine two rooms and have two people in there. There'll still be, the quotas for the the people, but it's just nicer for two people to be working together with all the kids and everything and. Hopefully that'll be done fairly shortly. We were in, did a tour, it looks really nice, they've already got one room down that way and. It was so cute, it was during nap time, it was so cute to see the little kids all there. I'm like, how did you get all these kids to sleep at? At one time and then right after I said that, one kid popped his head up and looked right at me. We were outside, he couldn't have hurt us, but it's like, okay. But anyway, so that was good. Okay, so then the sixteenth, I had the Iowa IWD statewide training. And then on the seventeenth, we had our IWD area five meeting, Thursday. And that was it.
Wednesday, supposed to had a region five hazmat meeting, but that got moved till the thirtieth, so. Had that Humble County Housing Meeting. On Wednesday the sixteenth, and that's the only official one.
Like, on Tuesday the fifteenth, we had a public safety committee meeting that morning at the DOC. My one official.
You had, you were canvas.
Oh, well, I guess, yeah, on that Monday afternoon, Bruce Rick and I were here to canvass the elections. Got that taken care of Monday afternoon and fourteen.
Which I would bring up, next time we're down at ISAC, um, we need to really ask. Uh, about the judges. I've had more people bring up the fact that. All these judges at the back on the election, when you're, you don't know anything about them and and you're voting on. Half the people say, well, I just, I didn't like their name, so I just, let's know.
Do some due diligence research to even find their bios.
These are even, these are older people that have been voting for years and they're like, I didn't know anything about him.
Never have.
Name didn't sound, so I just said no, it's like.
Did we have the discussion at the meeting or was it when we were canvassing, but there was some years ago. That somebody was paying attention to a couple of the judges, it says they weren't doing a good job and they ran a campaign. Campaigns for people to say no, to get them out. So, but past, that's been the last that we've heard of any judges and I agree with Bruce. That someone should help, not us, just everybody, the whole state, because that's on the state ballot. What the heck is going on with these judges? Why are they always on the ballot? Nobody knows.
You have someone in your county that is.
We don't even know where they're at.
Yeah, it doesn't have any direction as to where, what part of the state they're in.
This district, that district and they do though have a total as we've canvassed, Trish told us. That if they get more no's than yeses, they're out.
Really?
So it's a yes, no vote.
I- it's just crazy to think that that.
We're voting for.
We're voting for somebody's job and.
Be like if someone was running for governor, you ever heard of them? They didn't even know, but of course, we know what the governorship is and the senators and the congressmen, but. I agree with Bruce, somebody, and that's just, I can't believe people haven't brought that up over the years. It's been years and years it's been on the ballot. And nobody ever knows, except that one time about, oh, it's been ten or so years. But you do remember that.
Oh, yeah, I remember.
Someone paid attention and they put out information that wasn't very favorable.
They were voted, I remember that, yeah.
So if that was the case then, does that mean you can't tell me over how many eighteen years, that's the only time that there was judges in there that could have maybe.
And you hate to have somebody good get voted out just because nobody knew about him, so I don't know, I'm, no.
They don't wanna mass exit it. I agree with Bruce.
I've, I've been asked the same thing.
We, yeah, they just show up, so I'm assuming they're in our part of the state that they're. For voting for somebody southern, southern Iowa.
But everybody is statewide, I'm sure when it's that election and the judges are up for it, that's across the whole state, people are voting for something, they don't have any idea what they're voting for.
Well, I think it's something if we, one of us, we say it out loud, maybe somebody will remember to ask Jamie or somebody down there. How do we, how do we change something?
For the benefit of all voting.
People that are interested enough to vote. It'd be nice to know who they are, so. Monday, I was here also for the canvas. It was interesting, we had our system once, we got it.
It's pretty good.
Trish had her pile of paper over here. Eric was the.
What's tally?
Tally person, Rick read the uh, results and I had the um. Absentee ballot, so then Rick would read, he would verify that those are the numbers I had, I do the absentee and Trish was. Double checking to double check, so.
Bruce said we had our pie, it was like. Approaching on two inches thick. And then we got the judges, which we know nothing about, took up a fair amount of that too, by the way.
And I think that, you know, it wa- it went pretty quick as opposed to, but it's just, it takes a long time. Once again, I would tell the people that did all the work, thank you, and the people that looked at the. Precincts, thank you, they did all, when we had that many people come and vote. They, it means enough to them that they took the time to do it and it's a lot of extra. For, so now you just take a breath of fresh air and say, we don't have to do it for two.
Yeah, and there was no. Issue with the voting in.
And Wednesday I had my safety meeting here, um, everything went good. I think Ben is going to try to line up the CPR. For the secondary roads and also do the, do it for the courthouse. What was the other thing we talked about? They're looking for security, um, looking through the. Make sure everything is lined up. Chris was in here, we had a, had a good group and they gave everybody that was uh. Was uh, on. Everybody but Arturo. Arturo come in, sat down and about that time the guy came to the boiler, so. Went downstairs because they said the heat's more important than you sitting in here. So, uh, and the way it feels today, they must have got something working, it's not a hundred and fourteen in here.
You can get a new plant now.
So with that.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn and I would say at nine thirty five. All in favor, I? Oh, same time, we are out.